All right, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock on the dot. I would like to call this City Council meeting August 2nd, 2022 for the City of Angeles to order. Rose, can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Rowlio.
President.
Vice Mayor Hernan.
Present.
Give me one second, then just let him go. Councilmember Tiscornia.
My hair, my hair.
Thank you. Councilmember Moncada.
President.
Councilmember Schrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Next move on, item number two, Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next will be item number three, Approval of the Agenda as Posted or Amended.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gretel.
Gretel.
Aye.
Your phone's trying to just. Item reports public comment. The public may address the council on any items of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may refer to city staff or place on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have anybody that wants public comment that's not on the agenda?
Hello, everybody. Rebecca Nealon. One thing, we, Calders County of Governments is putting together an evacuation needs assessment plan. And they've completed their initial hazard analysis. Now, the next piece is to get public input on where the public thinks there's hazards, or knows of hazards. So we have three separate surveys on a website. The website is caldersready.com. And three separate surveys for community concerns, critical facilities, and first responders. So I have a bunch of handouts here. If anybody wants to take those and scan their QR codes to take the survey. There'll also be a farmer's market on Friday. That will also on the city website. It was posted on our. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else with public comment at the moment? That's not on the agenda. Rose, you got anybody online by any chance?
Anybody online with public comment? Not on the agenda?
I will close public comment and we'll move to item number five, which is consent agenda. Any member of staff, council, or public want to pull any item on the consent agenda? Hearing not seen them, I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda. Oh, sorry.
Anybody online need to pull anything on consent? No.
Hearing not seen them, can I, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make the motion. And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next move on to. Regular agenda, item A, Public Hearing. And Considered Considerization of the Levy of Assessments for the Proposed Formation of a Landscape and Lighting District Number Two. Greenhorn Creek can replace existing landscape and lighting district number one. Greenhorn Creek, Rebecca Nealon.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, members of the public. My name is John Bliss, and I'm President of SCI Consulting. We are happy to be here tonight. We've worked with you in the Greenhorn Creek for many years, but today is a very special day. It's the final step in an important Proposition 218 process that has been undertaken for over a year, and this is the conclusion of it tonight. I'm going to briefly kind of tell what, tell you all what's going to happen here in terms of the Prop 218 tonight, and then give you kind of some advice going forward on how, the best way to conduct the public hearing portion after I conclude my, my comments. Essentially, when my comments are concluded, I would encourage you to open a public hearing. And that public hearing is a time for members of the public to give any additional input on this proposed assessment. And I encourage the, the City Council to take that input very, very seriously. It's an important part of the process. The balloting is a very important part, but this input is a very important part. At the, while that's happening, myself and my colleagues will be taking notes of the, what the, the input from the public and if there are any questions. There's no obligation by the City Council, for the City Council or members of my staff to respond. It's really kind of an input portion. But if it makes sense to answer any questions or for any clarification, we'll be prepared to do that. After all the input is taken, you can close the public hearing and then direct the tabulation of the ballots. And at that point, Rose has secured the ballots tonight, and she'll transfer those to Kyle Tanker. Kyle will raise your hand. Kyle is the project manager on this project that has worked tirelessly, I can't even speak, on this for the, for the last year. I've got a couple other colleagues, Melanie and Edred, that are going to help tabulate. Once we get those ballots, the tabulation, let me describe the tabulation process very quickly. The first one, they're in sealed envelopes. You're going to hear this, "Brrrr," and that's a letter opener that will open the top of them. And then our, my colleagues will, we will pull the ballots and we will sort them. We will confirm that they have a ballot signature and look to see that they have a valid vote, be it yes or no, and we'll put those in a pile. So that's, so we, we open, we pull, we sort and look and make sure that they're valid. And then you'll see us put them through a scanner. That scanner will go through and tabulate the ballots. The ballot, only the votes that are present are tabulated. So it's, it's the returned ballots, and the ballots are weighted by the proposed assessment. What does that mean? A typical ballot may have an assessment of $650, but there are some parcels that are a little different. There's maybe a commercial parcel or a vacant lot, something that might be slightly different, and those with the dollar amounts would be slightly different. For the most part, almost all the ballots are weighted the same. So it's, it's essentially a one vote per ballot, but there are some that have a variety of different assessments. All of that's calculated out, we run some checks, and then we'll make a signal to you probably and say, hey, we're ready to, to read those results. When we're ready to read those results, we'll give you those results. And depending on the outcome, if the outcome is positive, that is, 50% of the weighted ballots are in support, returned weighted ballots are in support, you as a City Council will be empowered to vote on a resolution which would conclude the process, accept the results, and direct the assessments to be assessed on the particular properties. A couple of notes that I would add is, we still are taking, Kyle, are we still taking ballots until we start the tabulation? So if there's any folks that need a ballot that are here tonight, you can go see Kyle, and he'll issue you a ballot right now. So you can work your way back to do that. The final comment I would make is one, just kind of, I'll get on my soapbox a little bit and just compliment the community and compliment Rebecca on the outstanding process. We really, really like what we've seen. You have, I think, a 72% return rate. In our business, something we would predict a community like this would be a 25% to 35% return rate. So what that tells us is, the, the information was well communicated. Residents of Greenhorn, property owners of Greenhorn have taken this very, very seriously. I had the honor of going to a community meeting, and I was blown away by the, the attendance, the vibrancy, and the respect of the communication, both sides. I really liked what I saw. And so this, this community, however it turns out, it has been a success. I'm stealing that from Rebecca. She told me to say that, and she's absolutely right. It really has, because the community has engaged this process and will, will let you all know which way they would like to go going forward. Again, I'm John Bliss. I'm going to sit down and you'll see me if there's any responses to the, the input during the public hearing that are necessary. If you'd like me to comment on any of that, I'm happy to do. So these are, this concludes my comments, and I encourage you to open the public hearing to the public.
Thank you, John. And I may ask you questions in between.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so at this moment, I will open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public online that would like, I'll start with that if that's okay, online that would like to have any public hearing for, for guests?
Any public comment on item A from the people online?
And let me throw one more thing in there. We'll limit to three minutes per person.
No public comment from residents online.
Anybody in the audience present tonight who may like public comment in any way? Um, so. I will close public comment. And I will ask, is there any staff assessment or no?
No. Any last call?
Any last call for ballots before we, before I direct them to start tabulating? So if anybody have any ballots to turn in or would like to vote before I close the voting? Okay, at this moment, I would like to direct SCI to please start tabulating the ballots. Okay, and then for now.
Go ahead, Gretel.
Go ahead, Gretel.
I just need to refuse myself from this, so let me know when that time is.
So it would be now.
Okay, so I'm going to refuse myself. So do you want me to exit?
No, we're, we're actually just going to move on. We're starting the tabulation of the ballots, so when we come to the end, then you'll just refuse yourself again.
Okay, thank you.
So we will come back to items A and B at the end as we wait for the tabulations, and we'll move on to item C now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so next will be item C, Public Hearing. A Mini Community Development Block Grant Allocation Small Businesses Program to Support Security Managers in Conjunction with Installment. A generator at Utica Park Kitchen for Emergency Signing. ADA Access for Utica Park PNI obviously in the area.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you've already acted on this project and a very fast resolution approving this project. What we're doing now is allowing people in public who might want to comment on this project to come up and sign in on this sheet. The project basically will allow us to fence in with the generator that we already have purchased, and it also allows us to use an emergency signage and banner frames so that we have banners at the park and don't always have to charge and answer both. The highway, I would just say, I'll have it. Haven't answered any questions? We asked that you open a public hearing. I'm going to put those public hearings.
Council staff, any questions for Amy at the moment? Okay, Gretel, you good on this one?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, so at this moment, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak for or against item C?
Anybody online want to speak on item C?
Okay, at this moment, I will close the public hearing, and this was already done before, so I will move on from item C to item D. Public Hearing, Resolution 22-23, A Mini Community Development Block Grant Allocation for Micro Enterprise Loans and Grants to Constate Increase and Budget for Utica Park Kitchen Improvements and Construe New ADA Bathrooms in Support of Commercial Kitchen. Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, council members, exactly the same thing, but this item is to construct two new ADA bathrooms at the park, yay. And some of the money will also be going to do some various ADA improvements as well as increasing the budget slightly for kitchen equipment. Which, by the way, we just completed a whole bunch of kitchen equipment. I think it's happened a lot in there. And look, in the inside, you'll see that all the shelves are now full. We have a kitchen. Haven't answered any questions? Otherwise, we could see the public hearing. Anybody interested? Can sign.
Staff, public question, council questions?
Gretel, you good with item D?
Yes.
Okay, at this moment, I will open the public hearing. If there are any, anybody for or against item E?
Anybody online need to speak on item D as a dog?
Okay, we'll close public hearing. Oh.
Anybody in the audience?
Oh, sorry.
Is he out?
I will re-open. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak on item D? Hearing not seen them, I'll close. Okay, moving on to item E. Approved Resolution 22-43, Awarding Contract with Pioneer Electric and Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute Said Contract for Purchasing and Installing a Generator at the Utica Park Kitchen in the amount of $24,830, and Authorizing the City Administrator, Intention Upon Execution on the CDVG Agreement, to Execute a Change Order for $5,600 for Fencing and.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this basically requires Pioneer Electric to Purchase and Install the Generator Outside the Kitchen at Utica Park so that during emergencies where there's no power, we can operate the house with the kitchen fully connected. I would have any other questions?
Staff, council?
Gretel, are you good on this one?
Yes, right.
Okay, we'll open it up to any public comment. We'll go online again first.
Public comment on item E for online? Anybody? No.
Anybody in house with public comment? Okay. Close public comment now, and then we'll back to anybody with any questions. If not, a different motion to approve Resolution 22-43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in. Okay. Item F, Approved Resolution 22-45, To Purchase APM 60-014-001, Next Door to Napa Auto for Future Parking and Circulation Improvements for Utica Park in the Downtown Historic District.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this was previously discussed in a closed session. We made our offer on the square acre that is connected to the auto in conjunction with our Main Street Plan, which identifies as a parcel that can be used to extend parking for the park as well as some free circulation. Basically, you have to go to Sam's, come back out here, turn around, go back into downtown district, and support economic development. So that's approved Resolution 22-45. And I agree, once that is done, we will be able to assess where all other consequences happen to be. We have a positive report on the Phase One Parting Hazard Assessment. Can we arrange this? Haven't answered questions?
Staff, council questions? Gretel, any questions?
No. We're getting, well, we're getting it for the 55.
Fifty.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Yes, okay, perfect, thank you.
And fees, correct, Amy? And closing costs.
We shared them?
Yes. Yes.
So 55 and closing cost.
Any other staff or council questions? Rose, have a public comment to online first?
Any public comment on item F for the members online?
Anybody in attendance for item F, public comment? Okay, hearing not seen them, I will come back to the council for a motion on 22-45.
I'll make that motion. I'll go again.
First and the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody who's approved, same side? Item G, Accept Recommendation and Award an IT Service Contract with. Come on, yeah.
Comment.
Comment. Solutions for a period from August 2nd, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Uh, okay, so one of the issues when I first started with the city is that we just really lacked IT. We lacked network security, we lacked inventory of equipment, computers, network equipment, software, and what was clear to me is we didn't have our networks formulated in the best way that we possibly could. Historically, what the city's been doing is utilizing a non-call contract for IT services, which basically means you wait till something starts working, and then you contact them, and then they will come and address whatever that issue is. But it doesn't include regular support. So there's not support reversed to make sure your network is secure or that security patches were happening, or viruses installed on all of the computers, or that the correct protocols are happening across the board. And what is really probably one of the biggest threats that agencies, whether you're governmental or non-governmental at this point, is cybersecurity and network security. And that was something that we really needed to address. So we put an RPL on June 9th. We asked that proposals be submitted by the end of June. We received 13 responses, a lot of questions for clarification. We offered two onsite courses of our facilities. We have six respondents show up for that. Ultimately, we ended up having four, or sorry, six qualified responses that we reviewed. Panel went through all of the responses to determine what meets the city's needs. We looked at things like, how quickly can we get here? If we did have to have 24/7 support, which respondents would have the capacity to do that? We looked at, did they have, they needed to have the ability to have GDOJ backgrounds, experience with PLETS, experience with RINs, and various other public safety systems and protocols. We looked at if they have the ability to set up networks reversed to our SCADA systems for water and wastewater infrastructure. So there were a lot of things that went into play in terms of what they could do for the city. So we narrowed it down to really two respondents, and we made a decision that Connet really did meet the needs of the city most closely with what, what we needed. I have worked with Connet in the past. I've had very good success with them. My understanding is that Utica, sorry, Union Power Utility District is also utilizing them, so that also helps with costs in terms of if we both have calls. There really, you know, we can kind of split the difference on travel. They are only an hour away from us, so they can absolutely come if there was an issue. We, at this point, are looking to the fact that we do have some pretty significant overhauls of network infrastructure and IT infrastructure that we need to address with the police and City Hall, inclusive of potential, we might be able to hold in some public works water, wastewater network in there as well in addition to replacing computers that are in life. $100,000 is what we're proposing for that in the budget. I included 35, so it is, you know, more than that. And then in terms of IT services, when you look at the first page, you know, on average, we spent a little over $8,000 a year on IT services. That's on call. To have true, full IT services, it is, no, more than that. So it is going to be about $69,744,000 per year. We had included in the 22, 23 budget, a total of about $32,000. So to put it in perspective, though, a full-time IT staff person, which we do not have, and we have over 30 employees now. And not just employees, we have planning commissioners, we have council members that all have to be a part of our kind of technological infrastructure. Then it starts running at over 40, and we do not have any IT support on staff. If we were to hire a full-time IT staff person, it would be well over $115,000 per year. And we would still have to consult out for higher level network security. So I know it seems like a tremendous amount of ongoing costs associated with having IT support, but I think what's important to understand is, you know, no one's operating off of pencil making right now. Everything is on a computer. Everything is software. Everything has to be backed up. We have retention requirements, and more importantly, we need to make sure that we are securing our data, and we're securing our network, and we're securing our employees' information and our customers' information. We have a huge liability if something were to happen. Ransomware is, is not pretend, it absolutely can happen. Hacking happens all the time. We've had local public agencies that have been impacted by this. And just one incident cost them over $35,000. There's no insurance for any of these things that happen. So, and if we know that we are not protected, then we are liable for whatever we are. So it's, it's an investment into securing, you know, protecting, you know, our agency. And I kind of, you know, it's kind of like, you don't buy a truck and then say, well, we're not going to buy any pool. You have to buy one. So it's just one of those necessary rules, I guess, that, that we have to adjust in. We'll continue to identify ways that we might be able to, you know, kind of reduce things. Connet is willing to work with us to determine if, if not everybody needs to be fully on the network. If we're just going to be, for instance, on my percent 355, that can change the cost associated. It might go down, but we didn't want to shoot low and then we have to come back to you. So they are, the other thing is, part of what they're going to be doing is some assessment with reverse to where we're at right now so they can ensure that they're properly building the network out for what we need. And, and so, again, kind of budgeted a little bit high on that, but again, I don't want to budget low and then come back and say, oh, we needed, you know, two more servers. As much as we can, we're also looking at software that's more in a cloud-based solution instead of having to have server on site. So that also will eventually start helping with Congress this way. But that is the recommendation. That is what the panel made in terms of the recommendation. The panel including myself, the Finance Director, Michelle DeSalles, the Police Chief, and the Public Security Director.
Council questions? Staff questions?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, ransomware is horrible. And, I mean, even those who have insurance, it's almost like they know who has insurance, and they continue to target them after one, yeah, after one after another. And so I'm glad to start hearing that we're looking at cloud-based data because even some of the rock star systems I know out there at big companies can't stop ransomware since they are really, really sophisticated. And so, anyway, but we are living in the dark ages, I know that with IT right now at City Hall and the Police Department. So, I mean, this is definitely a good step in the right direction of getting us more online and serving our constituents in a better way too. I think it's also helpful to empower staff because then no one's going to work somewhere where you don't have a key on the machine. It's hard. Well, isn't it? When I looked at the council, I kind of, however, I mean, I think it's important and it's very important to look at the current technology.
It's like a washing machine. It's super not sexy, but you have fun.
So Rebecca, my only question, we've talked about possibly moving back to the old City Hall. Where would this come into play with that? We would.
We still have.
As far as workshops and everything, you have additional setup to if we did that?
Potentially leaving them, but at this point, we don't even have the equipment that we need. Like, this is really about the equipment.
The hardware.
We need to replace the hardware. We need to replace the domain controllers and.
Servers.
And firewalls, and we need to have, you know, VPN in place. So we are set up for really more effective work. And so, you know, I think what's. And so, you know, I think what's also important to acknowledge as we start moving these changes is this is going to make staff more effective and more efficient. Because it's really frustrating when staff, you know, or like it takes 30, 40 minutes to learn to do it. That's 30 to 40 minutes, that they're not working. Or when the email isn't working, or the whatever, I can go on and on. So there is a, and even within the police department and within City Council, there's a lot of processes that are happening because we just don't have the technology in place for us to not have the facts. It's things like that.
Extremely.
It's in so extreme ways, but in order to get there, there's a lot of hardware.
Backseat. You should say back.
I said backseat.
Wow.
One step above typing.
Most signals are typing and then there's backs. So, you know, so a lot of this really is about the equipment itself. So yes, if we were, you know, if we move from that location to another location, there will be moving costs associated with that.
Maybe just be conscious of the time. We can still move forward with the equipment, but timeline, and I'm not even saying that's something we're going to do, but we might consider it.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, council?
Gretel, do you have any comments?
Any comments?
No, I, nope. Sounds good to me.
I don't think any public.
I mean, I don't like spending that kind of money, but you know. I need a washing machine.
Is there any public comments online, Gretel?
Any public comments online regarding item G?
Anybody in the audience?
I'll bring it back to staff for council. And I want one quick kind of comment. So I think this is absolutely amazing. I think since I've been on this for the past four years, this was something that, it was, it was in the forefront of needing to do it, because it's kind of cash to you. So I would like to commend everybody, staff, everybody for getting us to this place. And now we have, I mean, a hundred thousand's a lot to bite off, but I guess the new computers are removed. Scott's going to be heartwalled out here. You know, and then there's that ongoing cost of service every year. But if we get the support that's needed every year, then it's, then it's money well spent. So I'm all for this. I think it's absolutely great. I want to look for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Same sign.
Oh, there. I thought you went on a count.
No. All right, next one to item G, or no, sorry, H. H, approval of amendment cost of lot number 288 in 0588-064-0055. Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, at the last meeting on July 19th, you directed me to debate lot number 288, angry concrete television, bringing the compliance for chapter 810 of the Mississauga maybe in Weeden Roche. That property was debated on July 23rd. In front of you is the totaling of the cost and looking tonight to approve the cost of $1,591. Took the big property and all the fees that the city has paid out and then direct staff to add that cost to the tax roll. Happy to answer any questions?
Staff, council questions?
Have we heard from the property owner at all? I mean, we know that.
In the Allen?
Yes.
I mean, you know.
So you, we don't, right? Well, I don't think about that yet correctly. Thank you.
Okay, you're good. Over to online.
Any online comments in regards to item H?
Anybody in the audience for item H? Okay, I will close, public comrade, and I will look for approval of the abating cost of motion.
Okay, great.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Same sign. Gretel?
Gretel. Did we lose you?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I lost everybody. I'm back on. I just had a question. I wanted to know how, what was that number again? 1891?
1591, 91.
Yes, let me step.
Okay, thank you.
159011, 1590.
159011.
Yeah, 111. Okay.
So there was a motion and a second. Everybody said aye. Can I hear from you?
Yes, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's his five o'clock. Okay, item H, aye. Approval of resolution 2249 and a side letter to City Major's Police Officer Association to include changes in Canine Officer Compensation, an addition of incentive and attention pay.
Rebecca. This was the discussion that we had in closed session. Direction given to staff to move forward. There was some cleanup language that needed to happen in the Police Officers Association, now you refer to Canine K in order for us to properly be able to compensate Canine Officers. And so that was the change in that language. And then we have had issues in hiring and retaining police officers. So the recommendation was to offer basically a hiring incentive, hiring bonus, as well as retention bonuses for longevity. The fiscal impact with regards to both of these, the Canine Officer Compensation was already included in the 2223 budget. The additional impacts of the hiring bonuses would be $5,000. We have to open concession to be to $2,500 in hiring costs.
Any staff questions? Council questions?
No, I'm good.
I will open the other comment to online.
Any comments online in regards to item aye?
Anybody in the audience, public comments in regards to item aye? I've seen none. You know, I will come back and ask for approval of resolution 2249. Our motion. Second, first and second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Same sign. Item J, approval, approval of budget amendment for city speed survey for $9,418 using SB 1 R M R A funds. Rebecca.
Okay, so we have some grant funding that we needed to apply to the budget. What I noticed is we've had, the city has a lot of plans or surveys or studies that have been done. And then we don't have the funding to carry them through. So we wait until we can identify funding. So, so we're, I'm trying to get all of these studies together so we can organize them. And then as we can identify funding, we can get them all lined up. In this particular case, this was brought to council in November in terms of recommending to move forward with the Angel Speed Survey. However, at that time, there was no funding available. So it was voted to basically table the item until funding didn't become available. I think there were also some concerns that if we moved forward with the speed survey, there's always the risk of the speeds potentially going higher than what they actually are. I guess my argument, and probably the argument of the Police Chief, is we don't have enforceable speed limits right now. So we can put speed signs all over the place and people could go over whatever that posted speed is. But if we don't have a speed survey in place, we can't cite or go any people with that speed limit. So a couple of things, this will give the police need only to actually issue citations. And then it will also put the speed sign in for the people to go and at the appropriate speeds. There is a little bit of flexibility. Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's like a little five.
Five mile an hour.
Five mile an hour, you know, give or take that depending on what the speed survey says that we can figure out. And so it will, you know, it'll make sure that we have enforceable speeds throughout the city and that we can actually start enforcing. The grant itself is $89,418. I included the PowerPoint presentation that was given in November 2021.
I have a favor for one second. My wife is calling me crazy.
Okay, yes.
Thirty seconds. Come back in 30 seconds.
It's somewhere near.
It's called football.
I was trying to figure it out myself.
So.
It's somewhere near.
So if that's okay, can I step out of here for a minute and maybe give you that?
Yeah.
You guys got, so you guys good? Good. Your floor. Gretel's on one. All right, guys. See you. Thanks, everybody. I'll text you all later. Don't sit down.
On your pens.
For the postal letters, the chair, the mayor had to leave and Jennifer Herman. The vice mayor is now the chair.
I can't sit in this chair. Okay, Gretel. And we are on item. We are on item J, which is the speed survey. And Rebecca made your presentation, so we'll bring it to council first. I personally want to say, here we go. I'm a huge advocate of this speed survey. I think it's hugely necessary in the city. Of all the things that get brought to my attention, speeding is always the one people say. There's just issues with cars going too fast in the neighborhoods and in all the roads. So this will allow something to be done, to be done. I'm really excited to hear from the public on this one because something that could be done might not be what we want. It's like forgive what you ask for or whatever. A year from now, six months from now, we can all be sitting here going, man, why is everyone getting all these speeding tickets? And my kid got one, and my mom got one, and my sister got one. Well, speeding is an issue. So it's not just the people coming from out of town through town. That is a lot of the problem. But I think it's probably a lot of those that live in city limits that have picked up bad habits because there have not been enforceable speed limits and there haven't been a lot of tickets written for a long time. So I'm eager to hear from the public.
I have a question about the speed survey. So what, how long is that going to take? Was that in here?
We have to, I think we have to have it done by, when did the funds expire? 2023, correct?
Oh, I'm. We have to do that every seven years.
Okay, so every seven years.
And it's our time.
And is there like, I'm just asking, like, is there a specific, like, two months we're going to do it? Or is it just throughout the year, we're just going to put the equipment in various places?
It should only.
Okay.
And the equipment's supposed to be set up so nobody notices it. So, you know.
Right.
Dry as you are. Well, and don't do it like on a major holiday or during fair week or anything like that.
But it is an interesting, you know, people tend to drive as safe as they feel the road will allow.
Right. I read that. That was really interesting, that.
Perception.
Perception, yeah. And that the speed limits could go up potentially because people feel like it's a safer speed, I guess. So anyway, it is interesting.
Gretel, have a question.
Yeah, are there specific areas that they're going to target? Or do we have any say on where they're going to go? Because I would really love to get down to town.
Well, Highway 49, Highway 49 and Highway 4 are Calhoun and Stakes here. The speed surveys on those streets. So it would be the city would verify to do the others. It's not residential sheets. If there's houses within a certain, a certain number of houses within a distance, those are automatically 25 miles there. And they don't even have to be signed for 25 miles. It's the other major roads, Stockton, Dogtown, Green Horn Creek.
Balacido.
Balacido. Yeah, there's not too many streets, so it won't take them very long to.
Does that give random streets throughout the town?
Not if it's a residential.
Not if it's a resident.
So like. Yeah, but all of the residential streets within Green Horn would not get speed surveys because they're residential streets.
Twenty, twenty-five.
It's just 25.
And so what Rebecca was saying earlier is if there's a recommendation made to actually increase one of these from, let's say, 30 to 35, we have a five mile an hour leverage or play that we could, we could not accept that in.
The adjustments are usually to, there's a compelling reason to decrease the survey. Like Rebecca and I were talking about Balacido, right now we're in front of a tire station. We give crap to them all the time. It's 40 miles an hour, that would be great. So if there's a school or a park or something that would override the road geometry, you could potentially lower it.
This is problematic.
Other compelling information, other compelling sound effects.
Are you good with that, Gretel?
Oh, no, I.
Okay.
I think this is interesting. I think I'll be curious to know the results. I feel like a lot of the companies out there are in residential areas. We should do a 25 and see the difference per se. But I think, you know, it could be a little short, right? Off where we're going to. So it will be interesting to see the results. I'll be very.
Thank you, Rebecca. So let's go ahead and open it up to members of the public. Anybody here, would anyone like to make a comment on our speed survey discussion?
Can I make a comment just for some clarification?
On it. Member of the public.
So just for information, general information, the 25 mile, there's not, there's not a vehicle code section that says cannot exceed 25 miles an hour. It falls under what we call a basic speed law. The general speed limit in an area is 25 miles an hour, but it's traveling at a safe speed given the roadway conditions in the area. So it may be a 25 mile per hour zone, but if there's no hazards on the road, then 30, 35 may not be speeding because it's not hazardous based on the driving conditions. Now, if you have pedestrians or bicyclists or golf carts or anything like that on the roadway that can, you know, cause the person to become more severe driving condition, then we can't issue citations for 30, 35 miles an hour. But just because a roadway says it's 25 miles an hour, if they're going 26 or 27 miles an hour, they're not necessarily violating the law unless there's special conditions that would say it's unsafe to exceed that 25 mile an hour speed limit. So I just wanted to clarify that. We also have some areas back in the old Angel's camp area that are residential with roadways that are 12 feet wide. Well, speed limit's 25 miles per hour. Well, that's probably too fast for that area. So we could potentially enforce a speed limit, you know, somebody driving 25 miles an hour in one of those areas because it's not safe to do that speed given the width of the roadway. So just wanted to make sure, but you know, just because it says 25, that's not necessarily the rule, that 25 miles an hour. That's just kind of a guide.
So every time that I've gotten pulled over, I said, ma'am, you were going excessively over the speed limit. I could say, prove to me that it's not unsafe for me to do that.
You could, yeah.
I've said everything.
But I'll tell, I'll tell everybody, usually the general rule is 10 miles per hour. If we can establish you're going 10 miles per hour over the speed limit, whatever that speed limit is, it's probably not safe for the conditions because now you're exceeding a speed that's safe to drive in any area, any residential area. If you're doing 35 miles an hour, that's too fast.
The only thing is 10 miles an hour when you're doing 55 is different than 10 miles an hour over 25.
Yeah, and then when you get up to those higher speeds on highways that are 55, 65, 70 in some areas, there's specific vehicle code sections that says in excess of 65 miles per hour. No exceptions. It's not, it's not a, it's not the same as the basic speed law. It's not same as basic speed law. So CHP stops you for doing 70 miles an hour, you can't. So CHP stops you for doing seventy miles an hour, you can't say, well, look at the roadway, there's no hazards. That's not gonna fly because there's a specific vehicle code section that says you can't exceed sixty-five miles per hour. Here's his card, call it. All right, there's no questions. That's it. I just wanted to add that information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's that long.
Okay, so we do have a comment online for us. Go ahead and. Joe O., go ahead and speak. Hi, Joe, we're ready for you if you want to go ahead. Looks like you're on mute.
Great, you can switch back to the room camera. We're just staring at the, at the agenda and it'd be more interesting to see who's talking. I think that was the chief.
There's no way for us to do that? The agenda is what's always posted up at the meetings. Sorry, Joe. Do you have anything to say about our speed survey, Joe?
No, I remember that from when I was on council. I think you better do it.
Okay, any more public comment? Okay, so we'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any other council comment? If not, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the budget amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Carolyn? We have a motion by Carolyn, we have a second by Isabel.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same signs. Passes at five oh.
Four one.
Oh, sorry. I can do math. Four one. Okay, taking us to item K. Approved budget amendment for roadside safety audit and install, relocate and remove roadway signs for one hundred and twenty-two thousand four seventy-five. Rebecca. Okay, so this is another grant funded program. It's the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. And we didn't include revenue or expenditures in the budget for this. We have, the original project was slated to be completed February first of twenty twenty-two, but obviously that didn't get completed. So just the P S and E, so plan specifications and estimates were completed, which left the construction portion of that, that grant funded project. So we have requested a project ending change and we are recommending the budget adjustment for the one twenty-two four seventy-five. The list of signs are attached in the packet. As you can see, there's a whole bunch of signs.
How many are there, do you know?
A lot, a lot, a lot. And we're not entirely sure if the one twenty-two can cover all of them. So obviously we'll do what we can to stay within that figure. If we end up identifying some additional grant funding to, if we find any additional overages in parts of the signage, we will certainly bring that back to council and adjust.
So are these signs gonna have the little flag on them?
No, those are the ways.
Oh, these are just.
Safety signs.
Safety signs, okay.
Retro reflective. Are these citywide or are they just on our city roads and not on four and forty-nine? I mean, these can be on, on the highways too, correct? These, I believe, are all on city. Yeah, they're all city. Yeah, these are all, these are all city roads. Local.
How long is this project gonna take?
Um, we changed the project ending date to twelve thirty-one twenty-three. So. So the timeline would be to go out for solicitation quickly and then possibly start and end it by December? Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. We just, we don't want the funds to expire.
Oh, so.
We gotta get going on.
Okay. I don't like leaving grant funding on.
No, no one does. Any other comments? Gretel, any comments?
No. Then for me. Sorry for the question. How long do you have? Um, this one lost, lost your. Lost it? Yeah. Lost this one. We did the plane. So this is the, this is the.
Okay. Any comments from the public? If we can have you just step up to the podium. Do we have a signage sheet up there, Russ? If you'd like to offer your name as a contact in case we wanna make that.
Mine's not a comment, it's, it's a question.
Oh.
Okay, just wondering, I had not heard this before. Why are we, so you're saying that we're replacing all the signs listed or as many as you can on that list? And why are we replacing those? Other than we have funds to, are they, do they need to be replaced?
So this is part of a, and we can even talk offline if you'd like, but this is actually part of a program that is a grant funded program for safety reasons. They're improved signs, they're, they're brighter and more reflective. So they're easier to see. Yeah, it's easier for. On a rainy day. Public safety or, you know, fire, police, you know, residents in the area to be able to see signs.
So now they're like, I live in Green Horn, so it's green and white, I think they all are. So now you're saying they would be more visible?
Maybe more visible.
Purposes for safety? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public for public comment? Any comments online? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to council. And looking for direction on this one for you guys, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Moving forward.
Gretel?
No, I'm fine.
You wanna make a motion, Gretel?
I can make a motion. Oh, I can make a motion to approve the amendment for roadside safety.
All right, we have a motion.
I can.
One second. Second from Carolyn. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed.
All right, we are four one zero, four zero one.
If I don't apply for somebody else, I'll go somewhere else.
Item L, approve, approval of a grant agreement between Calvaras Public Power Agency, CPPA, and the City of Angels for an amount up to thirty thousand dollars. Rebecca. Uh, okay, so the CPPA board met on July twentieth and they approved the energy efficiency grant application to the City of Angels Museum, the Morbus Fire Protection District. So the beginning of July, Martin, Hubert and Jessica Johnson, both CPPA Museum, submitted a grant for insulation and LED lighting. They had been working with Emily Donidero to find energy efficient grants. And so this was the grant that she had come across. So they were able to do an energy assessment on the museum buildings and they had identified two potential options for funding for efficiency. One was insulation and the other one being the lighting, switching it over to LED. So they submitted a grant application, CPPA reviewed it and they did approve it. So the total cost of the improvements, just under thirty-four thousand. It's anticipated that the annual energy savings would be just over twenty-three hundred and the museum will be contributing the shortage, the amount over the thirty thousand. So the three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. So the thing to note is this savings of the twenty-three, twenty-six is based on the current calculations of how energy is being charged, so. Not the new way.
Not the new way.
Yeah. So it will be less, but it'll still be a savings. So I, I just wanted to make sure that council's aware. So PG&E changed the way that they're gonna fill CPPA. And so it used to be based on energy use and it's gonna be changed to highest use. So CPPA hasn't received a bill, so they don't exactly know what that's gonna look like. We just know highest use obviously is going to be higher than actual. So, so that is going to have a significant impact on all of our energy costs. This isn't just the museum. This is every agency that has a contract with CPPA for energy building services. So just, just be aware of that. And, and then beyond that, just making sure council's also aware, PG&E made a request to the CPUC to increase rates in twenty twenty-three to pay for their partnering and also their subsidy programs for low income utility subsidies to low income customers. So I have it forwarded to CPUC, doesn't include all of that yet, but all, all thoughts are that they probably will. And that will also increase energy rates. That in of itself is an increase of anywhere between one point one and one point seven percent increase. And that's across every customer for PG&E. That doesn't matter if you're with CPPA or anyone, anyone who is a PG&E customer are gonna see increases associated with that. But just wanted to make sure, you know. All the, all the great news that's coming to energy, energy costs. But I thought this was a great option for the museum. The museum is working really hard to identify cost saving strategies and they're doing a really great job at increasing their sales. So they're working towards complete self-reliance, so that's pretty good. Perfect. Okay, comments?
Um, I have a comment about the museum and so I just don't know that the public or the councilant knows that in the summertime, the museum gets extremely hot. It is that metal roof and there's no insulation. And so any museum goers, our employees, things like that that are there are, it's like ninety degrees in there. It's really uncomfortable. It's not good for the artifacts that are in there either. And so this is something that we've been discussing at the Museum Foundation meetings is that we've got to do something. And so he, I know that Martin had met with Emily and so getting the LED lighting's gonna help and this insulation's gonna help tremendously, just also just in the comfort of our paying, paying, you know.
Old bedosens.
Bedosens, yeah. It's just been a nightmare. So and putting air conditioning in there, it just goes right out. It doesn't do anything. There's no insulation. So this is really good.
Any comments? Okay, looking for comments from members of the public, either online or in person about our, our museum. Not seeing any, bring it back to council and looking for a motion on item L.
I will make the motion.
Isabel.
I'll second.
Carolyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gretel?
Should we sit off?
Okay, any opposed would be the same signs, so it's a four zero one. Moving on to item M. Approval of budget amendment for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. City of Angels All Hazard Planning Code Update Project. Rebecca. So this was the grant agenda.
Because we just tried to throw the script.
Oh, I was like, yeah, boy, it's another one. So. Did you find a box that said grants? And you. Yeah. Okay, look at this one. Look at this one. So this is a hazard mitigation grant. So hazard mitigation grants come along anytime there is a major disaster declaration. And so what happens when there's a major disaster declaration? The, the, the federal government gives state governments an allocation of funds and then it opens up a bunch of grant opportunities. And so the grant opportunities that even if we didn't necessarily weren't impacted by the particular disaster that was declared, it opens up grant opportunities to mitigate future hazards for anyone in the state of California. And so it's, it's, those are great grant opportunities for agencies like ours because we don't have a lot of funding. And so we are constantly looking for grant opportunities where we can mitigate future risks. So if a disaster happened, you know, whatever it is, we're already prepared for whatever that is. So there's, we're always looking at those hazard mitigation grants because those are kind of our, our go-to grants that we usually find. Almost always we can find something that we need to get addressed. So in this particular one, it was a group effort. We have the last request for information that came through and then we, we got the, the congratulations letter. So we're actually gonna be doing a kickoff when CaluES and FEMA speak on this grant. So this grant was for eighty, eighty thousand dollars. The deal with the FEMA grants is there are seventy-five, twenty-five, you know, match. So they will do sixty thousand, we have to come up with twenty thousand. But they also do offer an administrative credit to us. So we'll end up getting sixty-three thousand eight twenty-five from the grant and our match would be twenty thousand dollars. We will utilize that funding to review the existing ordinance codes to make sure any of them that are related to fire production, protection, erosion control, grading, stormwater runoff, flooding, all include enforcement provisions. We're also going to review state law, now for our plan to identify any new codes that we might need and then make sure that we're deleting any that we shouldn't have and then making sure that we're dealing with those regulations. We will engage with a steering committee in that, so this isn't all done in a, or just in our room where we just decide we're gonna do a whole bunch of stuff and then shove it down our throat. We are going to review any input from steering committees based on all of the recommendations. A lot of public outreach is gonna happen. We will draft the code updates, then meeting with steering committee. And then we'll continue doing this until we finally come to the final public hearings and then we will end up adopting ordinance and ordinance change at city council. And then we will finally submit all of that information to CaluES. So we think it'll take anywhere between six and seven months to do that. I'm pretty excited about it. I think it's really gonna help us make sure that the ordinances and the codes that we have in place, make sure that we're protecting our residents and our, our properties within the city. So it's a good thing. Okay, comments?
I just think it's great, you know, when you're in panic and you have a plan in place, you don't have to think about what you're gonna be doing. It's all right there. It's good to have.
Good, absolutely.
Completely.
Gretel, do you have any comments online?
No.
Okay, any members of the public? Not hearing any. Is that me talking?
Wait, Gretel unmute.
Very good.
They're the feedbacks, so you just gotta wait till she either mutes or audibly.
All right, so bringing that back to council, looking for a motion on this one.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Carolyn, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's a four zero one. Taking us to item N. Acceptance of Proposal for Groundwater Monitoring FNA Regulatory Reporting with Condor and Approval of the Professional Service Agreement. So we, anytime anyone says, how come your water and waste water rates are so high? I always point back to all of the very intense regulatory scrutiny reporting that we have to do all the time.
Yep, and as a small community.
And we're like a little TV type of community. So we have to do groundwater monitoring. And so we end up hiring outside consultant to do this. So this is for semi-annual groundwater monitoring and then reporting and that's a requirement of our wastewater program. And that's a requirement of our wastewater program. I talked with Condor in terms of what they have been doing for us and then continuation of their services. It was recommended that we don't do a full R and P, R and Q at this point. Condor has a lot of localized knowledge and with the city, they've been extremely responsive. We get a lot of bang for our buck and utilizing Condor for this particular work. I also had Duverie staff help us review the proposal and they also recommended not making a change at this time. So the contracts for three years, we did make some changes in their proposal just to make it a little less expensive for us. We do have some options in terms of the reporting and the monitoring that has to happen. So we were able to get the price down a little bit. We had budgeted $10,000 in the wastewater budget for this year, but we will need an increase of 67.41 for this year. And then, as I said, we asked that they modify their proposal so that we will comply with the semi-annual 2013 parameter recommendation, which was our last report. And then we're also going to be taking that FTL, which is the laboratory invoices and reviewing them ourselves. What Condor had been doing is they were having FGL send the laboratory invoices to them and then they would mark it up 15% and then we would make Condor. So 15% is 15%. We talked and we said we can review that and we can do the FGL ourselves. So the total for the contract for all three years is 51,743. Sometimes, and I won't say that we will not come back to council for any amendments, but sometimes there is additional laboratory requirements that just come in quite just because something happens or some regulation requires a change for we want to do increased regulatory activities and increased laboratory activities. So if that happens, we will come back to council for that amendment. The spoken word is all in here. The, this is all before with wastewater operations and maintenance installers. So that's it.
I don't have comments.
Anytime I've looked with Condor, which I did, I've shared this job with those professionals and their attention to detail, facts, responsibility, all important work I've done.
Gretel, any comments on this one?
No.
Hey, looking for members of the public. Any public comment on this, either online or in person? Seeing none? We'll bring it back to council. For a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Isabel. All second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 401 on that.
You ready?
Good deal. Are we ready to go back, jump to that and then pick back up to item O? Okay, so at this time, we are going to jump back over to our items 6A and 6B, which is the LLB vote.
Great, thank you, John Vales again, SCI Consulting. The tabulation has been completed. The tabulation went smoothly and I'm going to read off some results to you. Before I do that, again, just want to compliment the city, compliment the city council, compliment Rebecca and my colleague Kyle for doing a great job with the process. Essentially, I'm going to go through and read this to you, some important numbers. Then I will give you any interpretation if interpretation is needed. I'm then going to hand you this resolution. This resolution has the handwritten results in it and encourage you to consider this resolution tonight. So the number of ballots processed was 332, which represents $209,777.50. The total number of yes votes processed was 276, which represented $177,000 of assessment. The percentage of yes votes unweighted, that's just the paper ballots, yes versus no, is a extremely strong 83.13% of the ballots were in support. And if you weight them by the assessment, 84%, 84.62%. So it's been overwhelmingly approved by the property owners in Green Horn Creek. The other important numbers, and so the no votes are the opposite of that. There were three invalid ballots. That's about 1%. That's what we typically see where somebody either doesn't sign or overvotes or undervotes. And so with that, you all are empowered as a city council to go ahead and consider this resolution. This resolution approves the final engineer's report, confirms the assessment diagram and orders the levying of the landscaping and lighting assessment district number two for fiscal year 2223. Rose, should I give this to you? So that is, you can keep that copy. We would like a copy at the end just for our records and I'll stand by if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, John. So Rose, there was a cheat sheet up here, but I haven't had.
So John, really quick, do we allow public comment on the results?
Remind me on the, I think we actually have already started this item and it's actually, we're pretty mature in the item and I think it's just time for a vote for the council. I don't think there's an additional need for any.
Thank you.
So no additional comments on this? Gretel, though you can comment, go ahead.
I don't want to comment. I just want to re- excuse myself before it's too late.
You're good.
You're good.
Okay, so let me know.
There was still a little cheat sheet up here.
So you're fine. You're just going to.
Okay, so we're just going to continue with item 6A. We are now in consideration of resolution 2241 for the formation of the revised, what do we call it?
Resolution, the City of Angels Camp City Council approving engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of landscaping and lighting district number two, Green Horn Creek for fiscal year 2223.
Any comments on this?
I think the residents.
No, the residents.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, I will vote yea. So we have a 302 on this one. Okay. Okay, we still have item 6B. This is the, we still have the new public hearing?
On item B, yes.
Okay, so public hearing to consider the continuation of assessments for fiscal year 2223 for the landscaping lighting district number one, Green Horn Creek assessment and adoption of resolution 2244 approving the engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessment, ordering continuation of assessments for fiscal year 2223. Do we have public comment on this one?
We can't have public comment. Just staff first.
This speaks for itself. Rebecca, do you have anything to say on this? This speaks for itself. Okay, any members of the public? Now's your chance, online or in person.
This is for item.
6B.
B. If there are any online public comments. None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council and looking for a motion.
Did you have public comment in?
I asked.
Just making sense.
Okay. Counsel.
I'll make the motion.
Caroline?
I will second.
Isabel? And I am a yes vote on that as well. So it's a 302. These are 111. This is an alternative. Please, so this would only be.
Isn't B only a failure?
Yes, that's what we're reporting now.
Yeah.
Is that the little resistance to me? I was.
I thought B was to put, enforce the assessment.
But that's what. No, 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 that is to enforce the current assessment. Only this didn't pass.
Right.
This is irrelevant since you passed A.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to omit.
B is a void.
A void. That did not happen. Okay. Right, public comment, there was your chance.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, he did. There was a cheat sheet. You might have taken.
No, I informed Alvin of the same thing, so you guys are okay. I really thought it was to enforce the levy or assessment.
So we're going to jump back into item O, which is the approve the resolution 2247 amending the 2223 budget to incorporate abatement cost, CPPA grant, federal planning grant, groundwater monitoring, H-CIT project, IT services, SB1 project and property purchase.
So all those things that we did before, this is just to amend, to formally amend the budget. So we're making a formal budget amendment to the 2223 budget.
Good thing all those things passed.
I know. It's a different thing you have to adjust. And so it's identifying, there's 134,355 dollar increase to the general fund. There's a 6,741 to wastewater funds, 80,000 to general fund projects, 182,625 to transportation projects, 8941 to our projects, 20,255 to coordination and 108,919 to the general fund contingency. So all of those are expenditure budgetary increases and the resolution as well as the staff report also identify what the net general fund impact would be, any additional revenues that are offsetting those expenditures and any other effects of the.
Okay. Fair as much as we got it, you know.
I get it.
A bunch of grant money coming in. We spent a little extra budget studying, so it's all, all good.
Isabel? Gretel?
No, I just, I'm just surprised at how many grants. I mean, okay. I mean, everything's like, oh, here's a grant for this, a grant for that. I'm, that's, I'm, I'm great, awesome.
We're on the hunt.
You need a grant, Gretel?
I know, is there a grant for, you know, I don't know, small restaurant?
I'm working on it.
Okay, so we'll take this to the public. Any members online have anything to say about this? Public comment or how about in person? Anybody? Nothing? Bring it back to council and looking for a motion on item 60.
I'll make the motion. All second.
Caroline and Isabel, all in favor?
Aye.
Gretel, your eye?
I heard it.
Okay, good, that's a 401 then. And then we have item 6P. Discussion and approval of a variance to the no fee waiver policy for Bret Hart Union High School for Homecoming 2022 and approved resolution 2248 for a road closure.
Okay, so Bret Hart has not had a homecoming or downtown rally for a couple of years. So and then prior to that, they really had just brought it back in, and, you know, I think in 2018. So I think they had it in 2018 and 2019 and then they hadn't had it for quite some time before then. And then COVID happened and they didn't have it again. So they wanted to bring back the parade and the rally. Historically, what would happen is they would just come to the city hall and they would say, okay, we're going to do the parade. City Hall would say, okay, the wave are retained and there we go. So we had approved a no fee waiver policy earlier this year, so fee waivers need to come to council. As I said, we adopted a no fee waiver policy. It doesn't mean we will never waive these, but it means that council just has to play in on whether we want to or not. Because there always is a cost to everything that we do. So the estimated cost of city staff is $840, the encroachment fee of 35947, banner installation, which there, there's already someone who has reserved the banner, but they want to hang up the jerseys, so we still have to have a boat truck come and put up the lines for all the jerseys and everything. It's 52538. So the total estimated cost is $1,724.85. That would be the estimated fee waiver that would happen. They have put together their parade route plan. Staff have been in the process of reviewing all of that. The encouragement permitted going forward to Caltrans. And so, you know, just points to me that things that have changed over the years, Caltrans does not waive fees for anyone anymore. The only reason they waive the share grounds is because it's a state agency, so state won't charge state. But they don't charge, they don't waive anyone's fees anymore. Not terribly than before, but they certainly don't do that now. We, they had offered to hang the banner themselves, Bret Hart. We can't do that because it's our liability if that banner comes down across the highway.
That's what they told all three of them.
They, yeah, so we have to do that. They, they offered to put up all the road closures and handle security themselves. Again, city has to be extremely careful in deferring security or a road closure to anyone that's not city staff, but also to be more still responsible if something goes wrong. So unfortunately, the attorney over here or your city administrator have to put the liability cap on and so that's just how it is. So the staff time is an estimate. If the event truly is only like 40 minutes, it's unlikely we'll have $840 of actual staff cost. They had also suggested maybe students can work at various jobs that city staff do. We also can't do that. So all great ideas, just things that we just can't participate in. So I did offer that, we have been talking internally about a internship program and coordinating with local high school. They did talk to Scottman today and they're very interested in that. So it doesn't really cover this, but it is something that we're going to look at going forward. I, I, I think it'll be great to have the community come out and support the students and, and if council approves this, once the event is done and we know what the actual cost will be, I will bring that back for an actual budget amendment to leave the actual cost of fees and then.
Okay. Can the students help with, just by picking up trash or things like that afterwards? I mean, that doesn't require them to do anything for the city.
From the parade route?
Yeah. I mean, it's like what we do as a community anyway. Sometimes we're a community.
The one, the road is so close.
What if it's not? What if it's like the following weekend?
Yeah. We, the city just can't.
Yeah, okay. That's maybe something that their leadership class could get around.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
So I think I've been pretty vocal about the fact that I feel like we've given away the farm for a long time and we can't keep doing that. So I'm a little bit torn with this one because I am a alumni of Bret Hart and I think that bringing that tradition is huge. I do really appreciate that they pointed out or that they came up with so many ideas and ways that we wanted to help. And so having said that, I'm in favor of this, but once we do know the actual cost, I would like to maybe get that, actually not to me, but to get that back to the leadership group so that in the future we can try and, you know, do some fundraising because like I said so many times in the past, I think what's been where we are is that we've given away so much. So that I'm in favor of this, support this, but I would like to see us know the actual number and then find some way for us to fundraise in the future. Obviously, we'd be very happy to support a venture like that.
Yeah, and since they haven't had it since 2018, they haven't had the opportunity to do any fundraising.
100%.
So I agree. It needs to come back. I mean.
But I do think it's a great tradition that needs to come back.
Yeah, for sure.
There's a lot of traditions from when I was in high school, which wasn't super a long time ago, that have gone away and that's been sad. So I'm really happy to support this.
Yeah, I agree. Gold murdered lady, glad to see you come back. Gretel?
Yeah, it's just too bad that everything costs so much money all the time. My gosh.
Where's the grant for this?
I know, it's ridiculous. But I, no, I mean, I wholeheartedly think that we need to do these back things because it's important for morale in high school life or whatever. But man, just the cost of living is awful. Yeah, okay, no, fine. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to bring this to members of the public. Any public comment in here with us tonight on this item?
Online.
Add member online. Any members? Tyra?
Hello, I'm Karen Dragmanovich. And hello, mayor, city council, public, and madam administrator. I do appreciate bringing this to, to the city council. And as madam administrator has explained, we've offered lots of options and opportunities. We can do transfer services. I myself am quite interested in the actual final cost. I do understand for other members of quote unquote society or fundraising groups or ABA or even frog jumps, seroptimists, they still have the ability to make money off of what they do. I'm definitely willing to do a fundraiser. The thing is, back in 2018, the only reason I brought this back after 20 years was because the community was the ones that asked for it. And I had been told numerous times that the downtown businesses did not want it, when in fact, the downtown businesses were wholehearted, all for it, and really supportive. Again, I don't really want to do this if the city or the community is not necessarily behind it. We don't charge a B. However, I do have high school students, so I have to have them pay for something or else they're not vested. And we usually charge $20 per car that's refundable afterwards. And the only reason that we do charge that in the first place is just so that they can't flake out and end up having free floats, and then it's really not worth it. But like I said, I am willing also to find out the final cost. And I'm, I don't want the city to be out by any means. But I also was told back in 2018, and many things have changed, that the official cost to the city was only $300. Again, times have changed.
Yep.
All new staff and things of that nature. But yes, I am willing to pay whatever needs to be paid that's out of the city pocket, but not necessarily where they're making money, if that makes any sense.
Understood, yep.
Okay.
Good.
I also have my four ASB president there. Hi, Jamie, thank you.
Maybe she can introduce herself to represent all the student body.
She's waving.
You just embarrassed her perfectly, thank you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm okay.
So this is a lesson to find out how expensive stuff is. But we don't know right now, we're guessing in numbers. So Ms. Dragmanovich is kind of saying, let's see the real numbers when we, when we are able to go through with it.
And to go on the record, we wholeheartedly support.
Yes.
School and what you guys are doing.
I will be there. I will make my kid enter.
I will make my kid.
You will make your kid enter, yes. Okay, any other?
Our family, have a phone?
Can we, I'm sorry. Rebecca, is there a way, once we find out the cost, that I reflect that and help pay for that? Or, I mean, how can that work? I don't know, because we don't necessarily know the cost.
Yeah, so, so at this point, I just have a place marker based on other parade events that we've done. So that, that have been a little bit longer. But once the event is over, we will get all of the costs associated with the actual staff that provided services. And then I will bring that, I can give that to you, and I will also bring it back to council for, for, you know, for nearly what the actual costs are.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate it. Yeah, because again, we are willing to pay. I'm just not really willing to pay $3,000 when it only comes to like 400.
So Tyra, I think what we're actually, what's in front of us tonight, Tyra, and what we're considering is actual, considering the fee waiver this year, whether they be a large amount or a small amount, but the actual fees to be waived, we would like that number to be revealed. And then that money can go towards growing your program for the future. So we can bring it back, we can support it. And then whatever proceeds, if that's a proceed to you, then that can go towards the success for future years. Does that make sense? But we do, we do want to know what that is, just for hard costs.
But we're not seeking the reimbursement for it.
We're not looking for reimbursement.
No, I want you to use some of those funds to continue the programs you got in place. You, that, those students have gone through a lot this last three years. I just don't want to have anything, put more burden on you this year than you need to. So I'm, we wholeheartedly want to support this.
We do, and, but accountability is something. They have to have some skin in the game. So they, they need to know what these numbers are for budgetary purposes, if you will, for your, for your budget.
Yeah, completely. And I, I think that's even a great lesson in itself to have in my classroom to present to the entire student body.
Yes. Yep, perfect. Okay, so we need a motion on this. Oh, are you?
Any other public comments online?
Okay, so no other public comments, either online or in person. Bringing it back to council.
I will make the motion.
Isabel? I will second.
We need to make the motion for the fee waiver and the rest of.
For your motion.
Correct. So that's both items. Claire? Isabella is the motion, and I am the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any non, if you're good, you're good, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a four zero one, and I'm passing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. And thanks so much, Rebecca, for bringing this to the council meeting.
No problem. Thank you so much for putting this together.
All right. With a long agenda, we are now on item number seven, Rebecca Administration Report.
So just an update, our website is really close to getting done. We're, at this point, I think we've got the format, everything that we want, and we've been doing some cleanup, Rose, myself, and then Level One. We're just going to start adding some content to some of the pages that will be new. At this point, I'm almost thinking we might just have some ending pages for those and then add that information if we need to, just so we can have an actual website recording. So I'll, I'll make that decision this next week. City has the updated survey information for the community as well as employees. So they're going to start working on the timeline to get that information out. And then they're also going to be setting up interviews with staff and with council. So that's all happening. I set up a, we've been, if you recall, quite a while ago, I brought up a software that we're using called Smartsheet. And I've developed a, a couple of portals that staff are using. And it's not just internal staff. We're also able to share those portals with external consultants to make sure that they are keeping information updated as well. We have a grants portal, and we also have a capital improvement project portal. And then they work together. So if there's grant funding for a particular project, it's tied with, they kind of go across each other. So that's kind of exciting, staff are in there already, you know, adding information. One of the issues we've all kind of struggled with is not like I have one piece, and he has one piece, and she has one piece, but we don't have it all in one area. So this is a way to consolidate all of that, put everything in a repertory. So that's, it just got unveiled between Friday and Monday, so we're, we're working through that. So that's pretty exciting.
The migration?
The migration is happening with Springbrook. We had the last piece, the, the last issue that we needed to develop, which was payroll, and we have resolved that. So now the go live is August 11.
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon of August 11. So August 12, we will actually be closing the office because we can't actually take payments or do anything. So it'll be an opportunity for staff to just get caught up with what they want to do. So no, until legal payments can happen online or enforced in on that 12th and over that weekend period. This is all in, moving forward to a hosted solution. And so once we go to that solution, there's a lot more opportunity for us to, to internally work better. But also, there's going to be a lot more opportunity for customers. So that's happening.
And that's part of like paying water bill and water is doing. That'd be a better system.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We are also in the process of actually looking at building, plan review, and code compliance software. The software that we currently have is not integrated with anything. It's, it's cumbersome, it's hard to report off of. And so we're looking for something, again, cloud-based, that's user-friendly, that customers and applicants can actually use so they can see what the status of their building permit is. We're trying to find something that they can apply for a business permit online without physically having to come into the building if they need to pay for their permitting fees or whatever it is. We're just trying to find something that has the ability to engage with applicants and who are efficient in it. So we are in the process of looking at various demos to identify what, what would work. And then if we're able to find a solution, obviously, we'd have to come back to council and have that conversation. But we're, we're currently looking at that as well. And we're just finishing up the generator project. We find the current building varsity council is right now. That is grant funded. That's through the the, yeah, the resiliency. Yeah, it's a resiliency project. So that was funding various generators throughout the city. Because of our shops. So that is, that, that's the last piece, I think, of that project that we need to get done. And that's all my thoughts.
Okay, council?
Council.
I'm going to trigger a board meeting.
Okay.
So Paul will report the next meeting, but for now, I don't. I attended a meeting at DAC on Wednesday about Integrated Waste. And it was with Gambi, Cal Waste, Debbie Ponni, Tomoski from DAC, Jennifer Cashy from Integrated Waste from the county, Marita Callaway, and Martin Poberty, and Robert Grassay. And it was just an informative meeting about what's going on with our landfill, county landfill. And so I will be on the solid waste task force representing the city going forward. And that we are meeting next week. I'm going to be meeting for Alvin at Cog tomorrow. And I think that's about it right now. I've been at the M Music Festival in Mary Valley this last week. It's been amazing.
Okay, I, Alvin and I both went to UWPAs meeting on the 18, not the 18th, sorry, the 26. And things to be discussed at that meeting. Overall, we adopted the new employee handbook for UWPA, which was a shared effort with UPUD. They did theirs at the same time. And that was very important for all the things that we have to do when you onboard new employees. We adopted a new travel expense and reimbursement policy, a non-discrimination, and anti-herospic complaint procedures. A lot of kind of HR cleanup. We did authorize the signing of the new agreement with the City of Angels and UWPA, as well as UPUD and UWPA. And we applied for a grant, Sierra Nevada Conservancy Grant. We did vote to do that. And operations, let's see. There's a new line of sight communications towers from Murphy's all the way up to Hunter's Four Bay. Three or four towers, I can't remember exactly how many, but that is almost to complete construction. So if there is a complete shutdown or any kind of loss of communication, we can be wireless or, or radio connect using these towers and keep the data systems, the water's communication, and everything working efficiently without power. And that's a huge effort, really a big success. There was a break-in at Utica, or UPUD's headquarters. I guess this is the second one. So they decided to add some additional cameras and.
Was anything taken?
Nothing, I mean, yes, but nothing major. I think out of the back of one of the trucks, do you know, Scott? It was some random stuff. Wasn't, no, yeah, but it wasn't any, I don't know. I can't remember exactly what was taken, but it wasn't detrimental costly. Just kind of an annoyance. And this was the second one. So the, the gates and the fencing, I mean, they're talking about razor wire and things like that. But all in all, additional cameras have been added already. That was the second there. The only other thing is I'd attended Farmer's Market, and that's it for me. Gretel? Gretel has no record, I bet.
I would be, yeah, no, you don't want to know that because you.
No, we do want to know. Yeah, you bet. When, when are you coming back, Gretel?
Ask her when she's coming back. People want to know.
Actually, we're just going to.
Good, when is the porch reopening?
Wednesday. Gretel, the porch opens back up officially.
I think Saturday or Sunday.
Nice. They want the wrap.
I, I know, I've been, I've actually been kind of feeling that that I haven't been to these people.
So one week from tomorrow, the porch opens back up.
That's kind of bad. Okay.
We're hungry.
Yes, some of our members of the public here are saying they're hungry.
We are too.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine is correspondence. We do have news and notes for both July 11th, July 18th, and then the Museum Foundation letter.
Yeah, so that was the grant that the Museum Foundation was able to get.
I haven't heard that they got it. I just heard they submitted.
We, yeah, we submitted a, a letter for them as well. So they were able to.
Oh, this is that, this is important.
No, they haven't got it.
Oh, okay, no, they were just thinking us for.
Yeah, they just submitted it on the 18th. They said that it's going to take a while, a few months before they'll hook it back. But it's exciting, that's their second grant that they've put in a federal grant. So now they're on a roll. It's good.
Yeah.
Calendar, Rose?
So last meeting, I sent out the new updated calendar council. It's through Smartsheet. I'm updating it as meetings are coming on and putting the link to the actual meeting in the Smartsheet. So I'll be sending that out tomorrow as well. And then just to let you know, so the next meeting, I will not be here. Olisha will be sitting in for me. I have that Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. All right, item number 11, adornment.
I'll make the motion.
Isabel?
I'll second.
Carolyn? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Gretel.
Thank you.
I just wanted to see the sit around, wait.
No, but I mean.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. I'll see you soon.
Okay, then, I'll be back. I'm coming back.